Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the June thirteenth regular meeting of Town Council. All members of council are present except for Mr. Reed, who did call me a few minutes ago, told me he's having some emergent problems at work. He was not going to be able to make it this evening, although he intended to do so. Mr. Vavreck's also present. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any comments? Requests regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar, including the reappointment that's listed there. Moving on to communications. A. Memo from the Town Council Strategic Planning Committee Chair and Town Council Chair to Director of Parks and Recreation dated May eleventh, two thousand and sixteen regarding the Chalk Hill Building. B Memo from the WMNR Station Manager of the Town Council Chair dated May twenty, two thousand and sixteen regarding the WMNR Fiscal Year, two thousand and seventeen proposed budget. C Memo from the Library Director of Town Council dated May twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen regarding a donation to the library. D Memo from the Parks and Recreation Department of Town Council dated May twenty-four, two thousand and sixteen regarding a donation to the Parks and Recreation Department. E Memo from Sprint for Monroe Race Director of Town Council received May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen regarding a donation. F Memo from the Tax Collector of Town Council Chairman dated June one, two thousand and sixteen regarding a request for refunds totaling two thousand and sixty-four dollars and eighteen cents. G Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chair dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding the two thousand and sixteen United Way Neighbors Helping Neighbors Grant Award for the Food Pantry. H Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chair dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Matching Grant Award for the Senior Center. I Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chair dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding the Adam Grant Award for Social Services. J Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chair dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding the Monroe Alliance Club Grant Award for Social Services. K Letter of Opinion from the Town Attorney to the First Electman with a copy of the Town Council Chair dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding the Stepney Elementary School Tank Removal Contract. L Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chair dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding donations to the Sprint for Monroe Parks and Recreation Department, the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library, and the Volunteer Emergency Medical Service. M Memo from the Director of Health with a copy of the Town Council Chair dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding a transfer of funds. N Memo from the Director of Health to First Electman with a copy of the Town Council Member dated June eight, two thousand and sixteen regarding the Health Department Intern Agreement and MOU with the Town of Trumbull Health Department. O Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chair dated June nine, two thousand and sixteen regarding the Health Department Transfer of Funds Resolution. P Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chairman dated June nine, two thousand and sixteen regarding a reappointment to the Commission for Aging. Memo from the First Elect... Q Memo for the First Electman to Town Council Chair dated June nine, two thousand and sixteen regarding the job description for a part-time front desk position at the Senior Center. R Memo from the First Electman of Town Council Chair dated June nine, two thousand and sixteen regarding the job description for a part-time tax clerk in the Tax Collector's Office. And S Supplemental Letter of Opinion from the Town Attorney to the First Electman with a copy to the Town Council Chair dated June ten, two thousand and sixteen regarding the Stepney Elementary School Tank Removal Contract.
Could you read some of it again, Mr.?
Sure. Public participation, would anybody like to participate publicly at this time? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close. Public participation, we have no appointments this evening. I'm just going to go through the action items before we get to the business. A Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters, Mr. Pels.
Yes, as I usually do, I met Mr. Mangios today, just in case there was something that the Board of Finance wanted us to know, or vice versa. Can you quote relatively quiet? Moody's, they were trying to get a better, what would we call it, a better?
Bond rating.
Thank you, a better bond rating. We're in AA two, he was looking to get an AA one. There were sixteen towns that do have the AA one, like Westport, Greenwich, but it's not going to happen for a while. Two, year end, the proposal, let's see, that he wanted to go deeper into some high-risk areas, like the tax office, like the Board of Ed. He was not implying anything, just the fact that maybe we should be investigating them deeper. But again, not for any reason. I immediately looked up at him, he said no. So basically, that's it for the Board of Finance, you know, the end of the year, two weeks, three weeks? No, so that's my fiscal, my finance. Mrs., yes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kinsley?
I went to the Board of Ed meeting, they talked about the turf field and down construction. We'll start in Ju-, on June fifteenth, there'll be a groundbreaking ceremony. They'll be hauling away about eight hundred yards of fill, which will be distributed to Stepney, DPW, and possibly Recreation. Six hundred yards of that will go to Stepney. They're going ahead with the lighting. Originally, they said that was going to be like on their alternate plant, but the contractor said that it is best to put the poles in when the sod has been removed. So that's what they're going to do.
So who's going to pay for it right now? Is that supposed to be the second year?
I guess they, I don't know, they said that they were going to use the, they were going to do fundraising for that. But because of the fact that it would be cheaper, I guess, and easier to do it this way, that's what they're going to do. So. Stepney Roof, they had their first meeting with Garland Company. They want to start the process and feel that they need to go out with an RFP by January. They had several branches come down at the Monroe Elementary Playground area. So they went ahead and got somebody in and took them down. And, and let's see, oh, they're looking to establish a building committee. I think this is for the Stepney Roof. They figure there'll be ten meetings throughout the year. There are structural issues with the roof, and they need to bring in a structural engineer to see what needs to be done. That's it.
Hadn't they done that roof just a couple of years ago? Or maybe just part of the roof over the cafeteria?
I have no idea.
Right?
Over the gym.
Yeah, just the cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
That part will be left, but the rest of the building.
Anything else? Mr. Pels?
Yep, yep, so we're on to health, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. The Board of Health did meet, I'm trying to remember the exact date, sorry about that. That was the seventh of June. There were several items that were discussed that are matters that are on our agenda tonight, so I won't, I can certainly talk about them as they come up. The council should be aware of is that the Food Service Establishment Ordinance, as I think I've reported previously, something they've been working on. They did some additional minor tweaking to that based on some further work that Ms. Brolath had done. So I believe that is going to be ripe for LNA consideration when we can get that on the agenda. There'll be some other ordinances that you will want to work on as well, but that one is ready to be discussed further.
Thank you very much.
No, EMS, Mr. Kellogg?
EMS, I spoke with the Chair of the EMS Commission, they met on May twenty-fifth. I believe the only item that's relative to the council's agenda, which would be for the future, is that the daytime staffing contract, the intent is for the commission to put that out to RFP as that agreement is coming up for renewal. So that is something that might come before us in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, anything, Mr. Rooney?
Nothing, thank you.
And nothing from me, so that's it for us.
Sure, thank you very much. Item B is the Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation Matters. Mr. Reed is the Chairman of that Subcommittee, and he's not here this evening, so if any council member has anything to add, no problem with you giving an update. Mr. Khor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two things. The first one is I went to the Conservation Commission meeting, and with the commission's permission, I, and their collaboration, I create, they wanted me to pass out a packet of information this evening. So I have a packet for each council member. And they actually have a lot of items that they want us to be aware of and look at as Town Council. And on the packets, I, they had a list of about eight or nine, I said, let's not get crazy to start. So we picked the top four, and the information is being passed down the dais. The first one is that the Conservation Commission is updating their pamphlet. The draft pamphlet is attached for your review, if any council member has anything to add to that. The second thing is the Conservation Commission is collaborating with the Health Department on educating the public on the proper use of septic systems. They are looking at a, to publish a brochure, the draft brochure is attached, to have press releases and public information sessions on that. Third is, there was a big discussion on Chalk Hill, and I included in the packet the letters that the Conservation Commission sent to Strategic Planning and to the Chair of Council. And the discussion was that the First Electman gave us at our last meeting a draft, and I made sure to emphasize draft to everyone, a draft plan for Chalk Hill after having a meeting the morning of our last Town Council meeting. And the Conservation Commission was wondering if their letters could be resubmitted because they are, they would like to see an environmental education classroom or environmental education area in Chalk Hill for the trails behind Chalk Hill. On June, not this weekend, last weekend was National Trail Day. So actually, there were about thirty to thirty-five participants in the Chalk Hill Nature Trail, going through the trails and doing all that stuff. So that's number three. They were also a little concerned because they submitted their materials to Strategic Planning, but the math that came out came from the office of the First Electman. So they wanted to make sure that they were sending the information to the proper person who's in charge of Chalk Hill. And I said, just send it to everyone. It's public a document anyway, just so everyone has it and no one's in the dark. The fourth thing, and I think one of the really important things that I'm hoping that my Subcommittee can look at with Mr. Reed as the Chair, is the zoning reg review. So the Town Council by ordinance established an open space and, an open space acquisition fund in two thousand and eleven. And the Conservation Commission thought that there was something in the zoning regs that when someone purchases X amount acres of land, a certain percentage of that has to be set aside for open space. Or, in lieu of open space, the developer can, or the applicant can give a certain amount of money to a fund that we established in two thousand and eleven for the town to then purchase open space. But that hasn't been happening. And one of the reasons is that it was not put in the new zoning regs, the fund portion. The set aside is there, but the fee in lieu of is not there. So the Conservation Commission is looking to come to our committee, is asking to come to the Committee of Cognizance of the Town Council and discuss with planning and zoning and inland wetlands how this can be accomplished. So that's conservation. The second thing is economic development. I talked to the Chair of Economic Development, and he is very excited. They do have a really good team, and they're excited, they're planning some activities forthcoming, they're utilizing their budget that they were given. But one other thing I wanted to bring up with economic development, and I don't want to steal the First Electman's thunder too much, but we did have a presentation here, and Mr. Kellogg was there as well, from CERC. And they gave us, it was a really, not only fascinating, but really well-done presentation. We had the President of CERC and also the Economic Development Director of Fairfield, it was really well-done. But one thing that really stuck out to me that I want to bring up tonight, and I have something else to pass out, is there are two things that are happening, something that I really picked up from that presentation is there are two things that are happening in Monroe that we really, really need to be aware of. And that is our population is changing. People are leaving Connecticut, and as well as leaving, people, our Monroe's population is aging. And from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-five, we are expected to, as a percentage, double our population at sixty-five and over. And I understand that the Town Council, when creating the Strategic Planning Committee, I think the Strategic Planning Committee is working very well for Town Council, but I think there's still something lacking there. And I think the problem is that I was hoping when I signed on to agree to Strategic Plan, when I voted to put Strategic Planning into place, that other elected bodies were also going to create analogous Subcommittee's of Strategic Planning. So that the Board of Finance would have, they didn't have to call it that, but they would have something analogous to that to work together. But I still don't think that that has happened. So I would like to resurrect something that I brought forward last, early last year. And that was the 2020 Commission, which I have now renamed 2025 because I think we're a little bit too close to 2020. And what it would do is it would bring together a bipartisan board and the First Electman, and we'd be able to start planning long-term, but we would have members of all elected boards and two members of the public at large who would be able to start planning long-term for things such as population decrease, such as population aging, and looking at, for example, if the aging population is going to double as a percentage, the shifting demographics are going to change budget priorities, so social and senior services. But if we don't ramp up in enough time, then we're going to be adjusting on the fly, and I think we do that too much. So I would like this to be considered.
Does this have, I don't mean to cut you off, does this have anything to do with your Subcommittee report?
Well, it's part of economic development, it came from the economic development.
This was discussed in economic development?
This came from the presentation that was put on by economic development, but I'm done. So I would just hope that this could be referred to proper committee to be discussed further.
One question, Mr. Kapoor?
Yes.
With regards to a certain percentage of land purchased is allocated to the town, that is, that's the case right now? In other words, you buy a parcel of land, other than, other than the easements that are required for development?
It is only in certain districts and for certain acreages. It's not for residential, for example.
Anybody else, Mr. Reed Subcommittee, that would like to add anything? Mr. Reed, Mr. Rooney, Mr. Kapoor certainly added something. Mr. Rooney, okay. All right, moving on to action item C, the Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, that's Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we met this evening and discussed a few items, one of which was the part-time tax clerk job description. We also took up discussion for the front desk Senior Center job description as well. We have some further discussion, will be reviewed again at our next meeting, which will be two weeks from now, twenty-sixth, I believe, twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Your birthday, shouldn't forget that. Stepney Tank Removal Contract, we also had discussed and reviewed both the contract and the opinion letter. MOU between Monroe Health and Trumbull Health Department was discussed. Agreement between Monroe Health Department and Sacred Heart University was also discussed. We did go back under old business to try to finish up reviewing the ethics policy, we're almost there. We're waiting for ethics to come back with the revisions that we have agreed on to this point, and we'll hammer out the remaining issues, which shouldn't be too many. Town Council Review and Purchasing Policy have been rolled to the next meeting for discussion. Let's all have.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Moving on to D, the Strategic Planning Committee, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, there's two items currently on the, kind of on the unfinished business of that committee, which we have not circled back at. One is the fire apparatus, which we're pending a meeting with Board of Finance or the representatives. And then the second item is the part-time pay plan, which I've been advised by most, both, both Ms. Lombardi and Mr. Kapoor, that that's currently not ripe for council, for committee discussion, that there's some work being done in that regard, so.
Thank you very much. And item E is also you, Mr. Kellogg, the EMS Facility Work Group?
Thank you. Again, the regular meeting of the work group was held on May thirty-first. The bulk of the meeting was spent further doing due diligence on site research. So there's been several sites with the assistance of folks from Town Hall and to kind of identify various potential sites that are worthy of further research. So that is an ongoing process.
Okay, thank you very much. And last is the First Electman's update, Mr. Vavreck?
Yes, I originally wasn't going to give anything, but Mr. Kapoor, you've made a couple of very good statements on what we've been doing, and I want to thank you for that. But as far as the 2025, I know, I think you know my views on that, I think we can do that as a Town Council and Subcommittee's. I think this is a very good thought, but I think we can do so that now. Even with the budget that we presented, and I know you all read it fairly well, you've seen over the last few years, my attempt to work through Ms. Jaeger to add to those areas. One of them is on the docket tonight, which for some reason isn't going through. But, you know, we are making a commitment to our seniors to get more programs in, to expand their capabilities, and we've seen those, even though it was new to you guys, Mr. Kellogg and Mr. Kapoor that went to that, and thank you for that. We've known that as far as our Finance Department, our Board of Finance, and it's been in previous budgets, and unfortunately, we have to keep budgets low. But that is a priority of mine to work on things in the Senior Center because we are getting older. I had an interesting day the other day, as a matter of fact, it was a Saturday, I was cutting my grass, and a fellow who used to be on EMS goes, I've read about the EMS facilities. And he was actually on a EMS facility, and I have to show this, I have to get the rest of the minutes, and I'll show it to you. But he actually showed me a plan from nineteen ninety-five that had a building, and he says he's going to get the minutes together, and he's asking whatever happened to that, do we continue to make plans for things and never follow through on them? And I said, well, we're going to work on it now because we have an EMS Facility Work Group, and I'm trying not to rebuild the mousetrap, but when he showed me these plans, they are, it's kind of unfortunate that things like that happen, but he was very concerned that we're rebuilding a, he didn't have land for it, but he had a building, and he said it was thoroughly researched back in nineteen ninety-five, so I'll get all the information.
By what organization did, did a?
He said, I had the drawing in my desk, he said EMS Commission, and it says right on there EMS. So I, I didn't know about it either, so.
The only, there was a First Electman's Committee that was, that was prior to the work group, but there was no, you know.
He said he's going to get me all the stuff?
No architectural drawings that came out of that, there was some.
There's actually Mr. Tor, so he's been, you know Mr. Tor, he's been involved for a long time. So that was my only.
Interesting to see.
Yeah, I'm interested to see it too, because I have the drawing in my office.
Anybody else, Ms. Martin?
Mr. Vavreck, two weeks ago, I asked you about if you could give us an update on Honeywell?
Mr. Zamri, do you have anything? I think that email went back to both.
You sent me back a report, I thought I sent it to the Town Council, but I might, I might not have.
We know.
Right, so.
There's a proposal out there.
Yeah.
I believe it just hasn't been handed out.
Right. But the Board of Ed, they were updated how long ago, the Board of Ed?
This goes ways back, I have to look, I would say somewhere in the range of five months.
And that was the last update?
Did we see that update five months ago?
Did you see it five months ago? I do not know, I don't, I don't check your, I'm not on your email distribution list. I know you're on for a lot of things, but I'm not sure, I'll check on that.
Well, wasn't the council supposed to be updated, not necessarily me personally, but wasn't the council to be updated regularly?
As long as the Board of Education gets it, I'll get it to you.
Mr. Khor?
Mr. Vavreck, I was just wondering, from our last meet, our last Town Council meeting, the full Town Council meeting, when you handed out your, the draft plan, two questions. In the last two and a half weeks, has anything changed? And going forward, what are we doing? What is the plan? How are we proceeding? And I think this came from, no one talked about it when I did the conservation, I talked for a while, but, for example, conservation. They didn't know where to go, they didn't know who was in charge, so how is this being handled?
Well, there's conflicting, there's conflicting from everywhere around. Like I said last time, as far as I'm concerned, the Strategic Planning Committee is advisory. Even though you've got information, like I said last time, it's evolving, I will be going with the, the, just lost my train of thought. The probate judge Wednesday to look at it. As you know, the Conservation Committee wanted to come to me, Marvin actually came in with a detailed plan that he said was kind of, he wanted to get it to me, he didn't know who to get it to, so I told him just to get it to me. Ms. Jaeger's going to be getting things on. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, like I said, Strategic Planning is no different to me than CFAP.
So the Chalk Hill plan is coming from your office?
Yes. You'll be seeing a full detailed plan, we have a couple more things, Jack has added it on. Mr. Kellogg has access to it, it's on the Google Docs, as does Mr. Mangios. Mr. Mangios met with Parks and Rec today, talked about certain issues, knows it has to be open for at least three more years. He mentioned that to Mr. Cooper, I'm sorry. So it'll be coming out of my office.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that new information, Mr. Vavreck?
What's that?
That the building has to be open for three more years?
That is what we've been discussing through my recent committee meeting. Mr. Kellogg knows that the funding we will have different usages for. It was spoken to at that meeting that the two-point-five million dollars to, to destroy it could be put back into the building and make it work for the next few years.
Next few years?
Next two to three years, yeah. Because anything we put in there, we're not going to put a department in there.
Two-point-five million over the next three years?
Excuse me?
Two-point-five million over the next three years?
There was a certain discussion that if we were going to spend two-point-five million dollars, which is the number used, instead of using it there, why not use it to repurpose the building and put it into things that we need?
Wouldn't you stuff that on every year, more and more?
Right.
And is there, is there a reason why that information wasn't presented to Strategic Planning when they requested it from your office?
As I mentioned the last time, I have not met with Strategic Planning, nor was I asked to be there. But I said it's an evolving issue, and things are happening all the time that people do want to come in.
You weren't asked to submit anything to Strategic Planning?
Not in the past maybe year or so, not since budget.
Mr. Kellogg?
I just wanted to reiterate from the last discussion we had, just to make sure it's clarity. I think the conversation at that, the meeting I think you're referring to, that Mr. Mangios and I were at, not to speak for Mr. Mangios, but there was a discussion over the two-million-dollar cost to demolish it, and that that component needs to be viewed in light with the overall picture. So I think as we had left that meeting, I think as we left the last council meeting, the intent was that we would look forward to a plan from your office that would demonstrate use of that, you know, in other words, a proposal that would demonstrate use of that building that made financial sense. Taking all those components into consideration, I think, with that information, and the goal, again, the goal of Strategic Planning was to gather that, help gather that data. It seems like more data evolved subsequent to Strategic Planning deliberating over it. But the goal would be to get that full plan, which would show the overarching objectives and the financial models that would support operation of a building for that period of time. That, I think, is something that I would certainly want to evaluate and view as the whole kind. And that's what I think I and others would be looking for, is looking at that overall plan and model that.
And the work you've done is great, but I think you've even seen that even since then, that has evolved.
Well, it seems that individuals who had no desire for use suddenly have seen, you know, and perhaps their perspective changed between then and now. I can't speak to that, but.
I should have, I should have something a little more accurate, ready for you for next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Martin?
Mr. Vavreck, do you, you said that, it seemed to stress that Strategic Planning was merely advisory. Do you plan on involving Strategic Planning in your future deliberation?
Well, the Chairman is on, is with me on that. The Google Docs that he has access to is an ongoing thing, and as was Mr. Mangios. And that's what spurred Mr. Mangios to go in to speak to Mr. Cooper, that and the letter that was sent by Mr. Kellogg. And I can't speak for Mr. Mangios because he's not here, but he, he saw the plan on Google Docs and went in, and in fact, he saw Mr. Kellogg's letter, and went in to talk to Mr. Cooper this morning. So again, that's an ever-evolving thing.
Well, I'm a member of Strategic Planning, and I've not seen it. Have you, Mr.?
I have not, no.
Mr. Leo?
I sent emails out, I can't control whether they're sent, I'm not going to send them to the whole board.
Why not?
I guess I could.
Strategic Planning, there's three of us.
The only, the only item I received was the draft of the exact same document that was passed out to council last meeting. I don't believe there's any, been any further communication, if so, I would have forwarded to the rest of the committee. There's been no other.
Are you saying I never sent you an email with the Google Docs on it?
No.
Okay.
I don't have that.
We sent it.
No, I have the.
If I didn't.
Again, you know, that draft document that you sent out last week.
No problem, sorry, I thought you were getting the Google Docs. Because I know Mike was, I thought you were on the email.
I may have access to it, but I don't, I didn't know, go out there and look at it, so.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Har. Mr. Vavreck, just a thought, idea, not sure how far it can go, or should it go anywhere, but just one thing to consider here. With regards to the state's involvement, with regards to, you know, building the new Sandy. regards to, you know, building the new Sandy Hook School, and their involvement with us housing it for the last few years, does it, if it gets to this point with regards to the cost analysis of keeping the school open for other uses or not, would it be prudent or right or correct, or the right thing to do, to maybe try to petition the governor or Hartford with regards to contribute, if not part, if not part or all of the $2-plus million demolition costs, in other words, the...
You're talking this state, with this governor, with this budget?
Hmm, that's what I'm, I'm talking about this state, this governor, this budget, with this specific issue, meaning the Sandy Hook issue, Sandy Hook environment, to close the chapel, to sort of speak, you know, just an idea.
I can work on that, but considering the fact he said he's going to cut another $20 million out last week, and never got practice on what it is, and probably won't until after the elections, I can always do that, I'd be glad to do that.
Well, I mean, if it was put into, you know, the context of maybe what I was suggesting, or some other variation of that, maybe that's something I might have a little more of a chance to have at least someone here.
And I'll bring it up to the state delegation to try to get some back, it's a good idea.
You know, again, as we're going through this, with the alternate uses of the school that's going to be vacated here soon, is to make it cost efficient, you know, for the near future, also moving further forward out, but beyond the three years that we're discussing right now, as far as offsetting the $2.5 to demolition, for demolition costs versus keeping it open and beyond, that's just an idea that...
No, I can definitely do that. Ms. Kansky?
I just want to reiterate that, it's great that there's people, you know, there's departments that want to use that building, but I'm a little concerned about $2.5 million for a couple of years, so I hope that we would do a cost benefit analysis and make sure it's worthwhile.
Anybody else? All right, so we will move on once I find the agenda that I just, I'm shuffling my papers. Here's my backup. All right, so, moving on, there's one item on unfinished business, but I did, we have a Stepney, the tank removal contract, we have someone here, Mr. Zamri's present this evening, and we also have someone from Connecticut Tank Removal, who's the contractor that was selected, so I'm going to use my discretion to move up item G on the new business, which is the Stepney Elementary School Tank Removal Contract Forward, so we can take care of this. Ms. La Palace, is there a motion?
Yeah, let me just find it.
Let me just find it.
Got it.
Didn't even tell you I was going to do this.
Yeah, see, let me just find it, see if I have one here. I'll just make one up. I got it, okay, let's see, motion to, I make a motion to approve and adopt the following agreement between the Town of Monroe and the Connecticut Tank Removal Incorporated of Detroit, Connecticut, and authorize the First Selectman to sign this agreement.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kapoor, for discussion purposes, before I invite Mr. Zamri up and, I don't know the individual's name, I keep...
Neville.
Neville. To answer any questions that we may have, I just want to mention that we did discuss this in LNA this evening, also before, just keep in mind, we have two attorney's opinion letters, one dated June 8th, one supplemental to that dated June 10th, in our packets, and LNA did approve this unanimously, three to zero, to move it forward for full consideration by council, so without further ado, Mr. Zamri, you don't have to say something, but if you have anything to say, I appreciate you coming, I appreciate Connecticut Tank Removal being here as well to answer any questions, does anybody have any questions regarding this contract? As you may recall, this was, we went to a town meeting to approve the funding for this, you know, the one bit of concern that was raised in Attorney Fracassini's letter is the potential for unknowns, which we knew, and the cost going over, should there be contamination or other cost drivers that could push this project over the $100,000 bonded amount, however, the letter does highlight that the Board of Education, through conversations with Mr. Zamri and assuming Mr. Augustine as well, have taken on the financial obligation to pay for any of these overages, which we hope don't exist.
And just, if I can have one more?
Sure, sure.
That what we look to do is get concrete costs for ads, so we know where from those costs to be, as opposed to getting into the project, which financially is not advantageous for us.
Right, right. So, anything further?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Corr.
Is there a timeline on this?
Yeah, we want to get done by August 1.
Oh, boy.
No? All right, seeing nothing further, I'm going to call for a vote on this motion, all those in favor and against, motion carries eight to zero, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Looking easy. All right. Back to unfinished business, so the first item is the Health Department Fee Schedule, Ms. Brolton's here, we've discussed this before, Mr. Kellogg being our liaison as well, has been advising council and Ms. Brolton's permitted absences and intentional absences, so that we would have the opportunity to discuss all this, so I'll leave it to you, Mr. Kellogg, if you want to take the floor and just lead us down the...
I'd be happy to, thank you, so the Board of Health did reconsider this, and actually based on some, and some advice that I had offered, the original thought process was that the food ordinance that I had referenced earlier would be ready and would be kind of, have gone through all the processes by July 1st, that clearly is not, you know, not going to happen at this point, we're not, and since there's no real time criticality for that, there's no, no need to push that, you know, through an accelerated fashion, so what the board essentially wants to do at this point, which I think makes sense, and which reflected here, is revising the current fee schedule, which does expire June 30th, to what you see here effective July 1st, without any specific end date, with the intention that when the food ordinance comes before council and assuming is subsequently passed, that at that time, the Board of Health will come forward and kind of overlay the fee schedule, come back to us for a fee schedule to include nonprofits, so the only changes that you'll see, and I'll certainly defer to Ms. Brolton for any questions you may have as to why, but there's, I believe, only four things that are changing, there's a residential repairs to a permit for septic, an increase there, D-100A application reviews, an increase, well drilling permits, an increase, and a new fee for pool re-inspections, when a pool operator does not, is not in compliance in the original inspection, and you need to go out and re-inspect. So I think that's, that's that, and certainly, again, defer to Ms. Brolton for anything further, or anything that you need more specificity on.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Brolton, anything to add, although you don't feel like that's a trick question?
Basically, you can, you can speak, different things around the town, and people, it was reasonable, I can answer, there are only, we run out a little bit, and I think it's fair.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Corr?
Are we in line with towns of our service level, like with towns that have, that give out services equal to us, I think, I don't know if population's a good metric, because...
Right, services, this schedules a comparison of other fee schedules from other towns, so when you're saying service, how do we...
But that's what I'm saying, how do we compare to other towns?
Okay, so basically, that's kind of more than one question, it's more like, what do we provide in services that may or may not be on the schedule, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering how we compare to other towns with the number in the fee, what the fee actually is.
They, in some areas are a little bit lower, but on the, you know, on the average, we're pretty much the same.
Okay.
Pretty much the same, that's why there's a lot of difference in the fee schedule.
Anything further? All right, so we've pre-discussed, is there a motion, Ms. La Palace?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed Monroe Health Department Fee Schedule.
Second, second by Mr. Rooney, we've discussed it, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, against, the motion carries eight to zero, thank you very much, and Ms. Brolton, I'll do you the same courtesy while you went once, we'll have you finish all of your items up on our new business, so the next one is the Transfer I, is the Health Department Transfer of Funds Resolution, which we had.
Got it.
Here on our dais, is there a motion, Ms. La Palace?
Yep, I move to adopt the following resolution as written and incorporated into the body of the resolution, be it resolved in accordance with Chapter 8, Section 7, T of the Town Charter, the following transfers are approved, transfer the Health Department consultant fees from $2,500 to the Health Department office expenses, the same $2,500.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kellogg, discussion, there's a rationale that's stated right on the memo, it says utilization of current budget to fund office supplies, that's why the transfer is necessary, I mean, that startup needs the department to include printing costs associated with the health program materials, so it sounds pretty all encompassing, an explanation to me, I don't know if there's anything that anybody wants to add, Mr. Kellogg?
I'd simply add that this was discussed at Board of Health, and they were fully in support of it, these were, consultant fees were not something they intended, you know, they expected to incur this fiscal year, so it seemed appropriate.
Anything further? Ms. Brolton, anything? Okay, all right, call for a vote, all those in favor, against, that motion carries eight to zero, and two more items, J, there's an MOU binding between the Monroe Health Department and the Trumbull Health Department, Ms. La Palace?
I move to adopt the following agreement, a memorandum of understand, understan, agreement, under, under what, can I read this?
Memorandum of understan...
Understated agreement, okay, understanding with the Town of Trumbull Health Department, and that's it.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kellogg, discussion, I'll just start by indicating that we did review this MOU in LNA, and discussed that it's the same exact MOU that we signed with Stratford recently, it was approved and vetted through LNA, so based upon that, representation, Mr. Kellogg was present, Ms. Brolton was also present, LNA endorsed this three to zero for consideration by full council. Any questions, comments, Mr. Kellogg?
I'll just add that the Board of Health also discussed it and endorsed it.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Brolton? All right, all those in favor, against, that motion carries eight to zero, and last is item K, which is the agreement between the Monroe Health Department and Sacred Heart University, Ms. La Palace?
I move to adopt the following agreement between the Town of Monroe and Sacred Heart University, to obtain an intern slash act preceptor for a Sacred Heart nursing student as written, and incorporated into the body of the agreement.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second? Second by Mr. Rooney, discussion, I'll just open up by saying again, we reviewed this, Mr. Kellogg, Ms. Brolton were present in LNA, it was endorsed for full consideration by the council, three to zero, you know, without going into too much detail, I just want to thank Ms. Brolton and Mr. Kellogg for recognizing the need and wanting to come before council to approve this contract, I think it's, was a prudent decision, it should be applauded, and I hope that it remains a regular practice amongst all departments, when these things do come up, we're happy to consider them for any type of agreement. Anybody else, Mr. Kellogg?
I'll just add, once again, that this was discussed at the Board of Health meeting, and that they endorsed it, and voted to move this on to the LNA and Town Council for consideration, so...
Ms. Martin?
I would just add that I applaud the director for bringing this to LNA's, could look through it, have it become part of the process before it moves forward, could...
Anybody else? Ms. Brolton, anything? Okay, all those in favor, eight to zero, I think that's all for you, Ms. Brolton, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this is an Adam border kind of night. So back to the business, item A, Part-Time Senior Center Front Desk Job Description, just briefly, this was brought before LNA, LNA voted three to, two to one in favor of tabling this for consideration at the next LNA meeting, which is presumed to, is going to happen on June 27th, the reason being, this was a position whereby the financing for the position had been removed by council, had been reinstated by finance, and LNA thought it would be appropriate to just speak with finance in advance to see what their reasoning was for adding the money back in, in contradiction to what council did, to make sure that we were all on the same page, and it was only tabled for that reason for the time being. So we won't be voting on this this evening, moving on to B, Part-Time Tax Clerk Job Description, Ms. La Palace, is there a motion on that?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to approve the job description for the Part-Time Tax Clerk position.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lord, briefly, discussion, just to start, we reviewed this in LNA this evening, and Ms. Lombardi was present for this, and I will mention for the record, she was also present to discuss the Senior Center Job Description with Ms. Yeager as well for that, Mr. Canberra is also present for this Part-Time Tax Clerk Job Description, and it passed three to zero for, it was endorsed by LNA for consideration by council. I don't know if anybody wants to open the discussion with regards to this job description, but this was approved by council, and ultimately, the funding remained in the budget for this position. Do we have any questions? Mr. Fabrick, I'm not sure if you want to say something about this job description.
I think it's needed, as I do with the Senior Center Front Desk.
All right, call for a vote, all those in favor, and against, motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to C, is the 2016 United Way Neighbors Helping Neighbors Grant Award, Ms. La Palace?
I move to adopt the following resolution as written and incorporated into the body of the resolution, be it resolved, the Town Council approves the 2016 United Way Neighbors Helping Neighbors Food Pantry Grant Award, and hereby accepts a check in the amount of $6,500 to be used for the purchase of fresh fruits and vegetables for the pantry.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kapoor, discussion, I don't wish to say anything about this, for two of this grant.
Oh, thank you.
All right, all those in favor, against, motion carries eight to zero, new business, item D, is the State of Connecticut DOT Matching Grant Award for the Elderly and Disabled Transportation Services, Ms. La Palace?
I make a motion to approve the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Matching Grant Program for the Elderly and Disabled as written, be it resolved that Stephen J. Fabrick, First Selectman, is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement on behalf of the Town of Monroe, the State of Connecticut, Department of Transportation for the Matching Grant Program for the Elderly and Disabled in the amount of $26,342.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kapoor, any discussion regarding this grant, Ms. Yeager, I know you applied for it, I know you do on an annual basis, so I thank you on behalf of the full council for doing so, is there anything you want to say?
I'm here every year, I'll face the salaries of the transportation board there and two days a month.
Right. Thank you very much, anything further? All right, all those in favor, against, motion carries eight to zero, E, the Adam Grant Award, Ms. La Palace?
I make a motion to approve the Adam Grant Award as written, be it resolved, that Town Council approves the Adam Grant Award and hereby accepts the check in the amount of $700 to be used to purchase literature and materials for the Department of Community and Social Services Community Awareness Program.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kapoor, again, Ms. Yeager applied and received this grant, so thank you very much, anything... Uh, anything, any further discussion for any members of council? Ms. Yeager, anything you want to say? Okay. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. F, Monroe Lions Club Grant Award.
I make a motion to approve the Monroe Lions Club Grant Award as written. Be it resolved, the Town Council approves the Monroe Lions Club Grant Award, and hereby accepts the check in the amount of $1,000 to be used to purchase materials for the Department of Community and Social Services Welfare, Wellness Fair.
Motion by Ms. Lapalas, is there a second? Second by Mr. Rooney. Again, Ms. Yeager applied for this and received this grant. Thank you very much. Any further discussion by members of council? Ms. Yeager? All those in favor? Against, motion carries eight to zero. H, WMNR fiscal year 2017 budget. I saw Mr. Anderson here before. This is, is there a motion, Mr. Palas?
Sure. I move to approve the WMNR fiscal year 2017 budget.
Uh, motion by Mr. Palas is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin. Discussion, uh, for those members of council who have been here in years past, we, we received this memo from Mr. Anderson with a lot of detail on an annual basis. Got plenty of explanation, I, I believe.